I would like to call the Fairfield Fairfield County Council regular meeting to order. Wentzboro, South Carolina, Monday, April sixth, twenty six, twenty twenty one, six o'clock P. M. Can we get approval of the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Proposer's nay. Agenda stands approved. We're going to have invocation by Councilmember Rose Barrow.
By your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us this day. Thank you for giving us the strength to move forward. Heavenly Father, thank you for everything you've done for us. Help us make good decisions for the citizens of Fairfield County. All these blessing acts in Lord Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Down to number four, approval of the minutes. We want to go ahead and prove the regular meeting, April twelfth, twenty twenty one, and the special meeting, April thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Proposer's nay. So the minutes stand approved. Presentation is non. Number six, first public comment session. Ms. Davis, we have any?
We have one who wishes to speak tonight. Mr. Thomas Armstrong, speaking on Fairfield County.
Good evening. I come to unite really as an extremely concerned citizen. With the forty six point four million dollar budget that we have for the twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget year, and I look around the county and I don't see any changes. With the idea that we'll have in trouble completing a budget for the twenty twenty one, twenty two fiscal year just raises a lot of concerns. And with all my concerns and no answers, I have reached out to my House and Senate representative to have conversation with them. And tonight I come before you all to ask council tonight that you all would have joined me in asking our House as well as our Senate representative for an audit. We need to know where our money is being spent. The people of Fairfield County have a right to know. Can't no one tell us? We really need to understand where is all this money going? So I asked that someone, even in executive session, if you will, come back out and make a decision to join and so that we could give the people some true transparency. I know a lot of times everybody ran on transparency. Everybody talk about being transparent. And here's an opportunity to do it. I suspect there's a large sum of money that haven't been accounted for. The idea that we found money to help with the next year's budget. Y'all, we're not kindergarten grade people here. We are professionals in here. And to find money should bring as much concern to you all as it does me. You know, I asked the question, where was the money found? Did somebody have it on their desk? Was it in an account that we didn't know anything about? There's some things that's not being adequately put forth for the people. And therefore, we need to make sure that the people do, that you all do your due diligence and join in asking for an audit. That's the only way to get to the bottom of this thing so that we can account for the money. So I ask you again, please ponder over the idea that in order for us to move forward, we must make sure we're moving forward in good terms. Right now, y'all, we're hurting. We all over the place. The idea of asking the citizens to possibly look at a pay increase or mileage increases, it's not fair. If you all remember, y'all borrowed that money when you thought that the V C summer two new reactor was coming online. So you borrowed all this money. It didn't come online. Now we are paying it back. At some point, the citizens must stop paying for the mistake of poor counseling. You know, right now, you all are not doing a good job as a council as a whole. So why don't we call a stop, an audible, however you want to call it? Let's get someone in here to do an audit, to check our books, to make sure that everything is in order, and let's move forward together. I think the people could understand and have a better feeling about moving forward if we know where we at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Okay, we're down to, that was the last person, right, Ms. Davis? We're down to number seven, executive session. Can we get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, the purpose of going to the executive session is number A, personnel matter discussion concerning the position of county administrator pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation thirty dash four dash seventy eight one. And number B, economic development, discussion of matters related to the proposal location of expansion of industry in the area pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation thirty dash four seventy eight five. Contractual matter, discussion of negotiation concerning proposed contract for sale of property pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation thirty dash four seventy eight two. Legal matter, receipt of legal advice and discussion concerning consultation with additional bond attorney pursuant to South Carolina Code annotation thirty dash four dash seventy eight one. Are you ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Proposer's nay. Thank you. Now go into executive session.
Okay, are you ready to vote? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Okay, we're down to number eight. Further hearing, Ms. Davis.
Okay, you want to start it at 7:13?
Yep.
We have one that has signed to speak about the budget, Mr. Thomas Armstrong.
Good evening again. Sort of feel a little lonely. I'm the only person speaking tonight, but nevertheless, the budget, I was here on last Wednesday when for the budget hearing. Now, one thing that I want to, I shouldn't have to, but I want to remind council, the entire council of the simple fact that, you know, you all have made decisions that have not been beneficiary to the people of Fairfield County. And you continue to make decisions that's not beneficiary to the people of Fairfield County. We have a county administrator who have shown extremely terrible leadership, who has continuously year after year brought who has continuously, year after year, brought forth budgets that was not balanced budgets, that was not, you know, foreseeable balanced budgets that we had in the last four years going to the fund balance, to the tune of some fourteen million dollars or plus that have came out of the fund balance. That's not leadership, that, that's not good leadership, by no means. But yet and still, we continue to sit here and, and, and talk about a budget, and even right now, you're looking at a budget that you're struggling to be able to produce. The monies for, earlier, there was some thought about furloughing days. Wednesday night, I heard the conversation of perhaps increasing the millage by five percent, you know, reducing services to the, to the taxpayers of Fairfield County. Look here, you all was not elected to take away from us and give us more taxes. You all are doing the exact opposite that you was elected to do. Because your leadership leads you the wrong way, and you can continue to follow down this, this foxhole, somebody got to pull back, somebody got to say stop. You know, we cannot continue to allow bad decisions to become more bad decisions. From the ad hoc committee report, some six hundred thousand dollars to be put into mine design. Look, I'm, I'm gonna make this plan as simple. Mine design is a bad deal, I don't care how you look at it. Mine design is a deal that is not going to profit the people of Fairfield County in no kind of way. It's a money pit. We're going to put as much money in mine design, it's just ridiculous. The figures that originally came out, no, ain't true. You have spent more already. There was a million dollars put into an extra account, some eight hundred thousand dollars is already gone. Look here, stop playing with the people. We're not as ignorant as y'all might think we are, because I'm gonna tell you, this is what's gonna happen. Election is coming up, and all, all seven of you all gonna have to deal with the public when you come back asking for votes. And I promise you, I'm gonna be there with you, and I'm gonna tell everybody that you didn't do what you were supposed to do when you here, why give you another chance? See, we not gonna do you all the way you all continue to do to county administrator, give him chance after chance after chance after chance, while he's continually cutting our throats. This man has already left y'all, and he's still sitting here making decisions with y'all. What kind of representation is that? You know, it make you all look very unintelligent, very unintelligent when he can do what he do, resign, and y'all still work with him. Where's, where's your leadership? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
No one else sign to speak.
Okay, so it is now seven sixteen, so we close the public hearing. Okay, we're down to ordinance resolution and ordinance, second reading. Before I do that, one of the things we need to do is make a, just, and I know everyone knows this, but I'm just go over it. After reading of the budget, we need to make a motion and a second to approve the, approve the second reading. But then, we have a motion list, we go down the motion list, then we gonna have to pass each one of those items. And then, as we pass it, or not pass it, then it goes on to the budget. So again, and we do that at the end of the budget list, and then we come back and, and make a motion to, for the amended second reading. Okay, can we get second reading, ordinance number seven sixty-seven, to establish operating and capital budget for the operation of the county government of Fairfield County for the fiscal year commenced in July one, twenty twenty-one, to provide for the levied taxes for Fairfield County for the fiscal year commenced in Ju, commenced in July one, twenty twenty-one, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain physical and other matters relating to county government and the other matters related there too. Can we get a motion?
It's been moved, Mr. Chairman.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. So, do, do we have any amendments to the, to the budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Starting with option A, I make an amended motion to decline raising the millage five meals.
Okay, Mr. Trapp, if, if you don't want these things to be, as I understand them, we won't put them in the budget, you just skip over those, those things.
Second.
I'm, I'm correct, right? Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, motion for B, make a motion that we fund behavioral health at adopted.
And what, what about number three?
Three, okay, my bad. Make amended motion for the town of Winsboro and the schools to be approved.
Can we get a second on the amended motion?
I second.
Okay, are you ready to?
Discuss.
Um, discussion?
This chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
For, for staff, we would like you to go down the list and take action, yea or nay, on each one that's listed. That's what we were anticipating.
Okay, so what we can do then is, we, we have finished this one, then we go back up to, to the rest of them. Okay, we can do that. Okay, and Mr. Roberts?
Mr. Chair, as far as the raising, the having the city to pay for trash, it was, a concern was brought to me by few constituents, the fact that we'll be possibly charging county citizens that live in the city limits almost like double. It was just a concern brought to me, and, and if you kind of think about it, it is true. We technically don't charge the citizens in the county for trash services. Maybe is it possible for city residents to have some type of, some type of leeway, it's just a, a concern that was brought to me, so I wanted to bring it up.
Mr. Robinson, one of the things, as you note that, this is one of the things that I think you talked about and brought up. And the town of Winsboro, as I understand it, charges for trash pickup.
Yes, sir, that's true.
And because they charge for trash pickup, you know, only thing they'll be doing here is just like any other business owner would be, they have to pay for it. Okay? Are you ready, any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Okay, stand approved. Okay, millage increase, so we can do like you was talking about, Mr. Trapp.
Option one A, Mr. Chair, may I make amended motion to decline the five meals increase?
I second.
Okay, it's been, it, it's been moved and second to not do the mill increase. Are you ready to vote?
Discussion.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Okay, option one, option B, millage increase.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make amended motion to decline the raising the millage to the current CPI.
I second.
Has been moved and second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Number two.
Chairman, I'll make amended motion to decline the millage increase for the library.
Second? Can we get a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye? Okay?
David, can you explain the, the millage increase for the library and how that works?
Some agencies, and this is, is, is common, and I'll let you jump in to kind of explain some more. They operate off a millage, we don't fund their budget, they're kind of semi-autonomous to autonomous, as opposed to it being run by the county like one of our agencies. But they are funded through the millage, and you all do get to vote yes or no on the millage to, when they need additional funding. And so that's, that's what it's coming for you all for, even though you don't run the library.
Any leeway on where this additional fund will be going, or?
Well, just, just like we talk about the county, they, if their revenues don't meet their expenses, it dips into, to their fund balance, and for probably the last three years, I think they have dipped in, and it's, it's getting close to being gone. And they, they're due a millage increase, I couldn't tell you the last time they had a millage increase. And one mill would get them, you know, where they would need to be for probably quite a few more years.
Any other, any other questions? Ms. Gilbert?
Hey, you said that one mill would probably be like four dollars for the customer.
Yeah, for the average, excuse me, the average hundred thousand dollar property that's a primary resident, one mill is going to be about four dollars.
Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose is?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so that's four, three, not to do it. Okay, we've already done number three. Number four A, reduce agency budget by thirty percent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we decline reducing the agency's budget and keep it at the, what's currently in the budget at five hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars.
A second.
It's been moved and second, to keep the agency budget as in, as in the budget. Discussion?
Ms. Chair.
Yes, Robinson?
Unless you guys know something I don't know, I mean, we harped on for two, for two weeks, you know, cutting the budget, so.
Okay.
I, I think that when we take a look at this, some of the monies that are coming down now, some of the federal monies, basically takes a look at how the money might be used for nonprofits. And I know that we discussed the last time that some nonprofits want to apply for money themselves, but in speaking to some of the nonprofits, they have said that they're not allowed to, to basically get that money for themselves, especially if they're United Way agencies. So I think that there may be another way to try to get some of the funding for our nonprofits that would help us with the budget amount.
Thank you, I just wanted some type of explanation, so.
Okay, it's been moved and second, any other discussion? If not, all in, I mean, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose is? So, it's all seven zero.
Mr. Chairman, item four B, I make amended motion to fund the Fairfield County behavioral health at the twenty twenty-one adopted budget amount, so sixty-two thousand nine hundred forty-four dollars.
Okay, and because we had that in the, we, we didn't reduce anybody, so all let it stay the same, correct? All right? But we, we, can we get it, we just carried through since the staff wants us to do that. Can we get a second?
A second.
I'm in a discussion?
Everybody's standing.
All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose is nay? So all that's approved. Number five, personnel request, Sheriff Evidence Officer.
Mr. Motion, I make, Mr. Chairman, I'll make amended motion to decline the personnel request.
Can we get a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion?
That was a motion to decline, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose is same, oppose is nay?
Nay.
Okay, so that's six one?
Item six A, Mr. Chairman, I'll make amended motion to do a newsletter for county council up to twenty thousand dollars.
Can we get a second?
A second.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose is?
Nay.
Okay, so that's, let the record show, that's four three for the amended motion, passed.
Six B, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make amended motion to reduce council travel to make the newsletter budget neutral.
I second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion?
Well, assuming that we're gonna take Hilton Head Trail and do a wait since we want to spend twenty thousand dollars on a newsletter, head trip, about twenty thousand dollars for council to go. I was, I would encourage us not to go Hilton Head.
Okay, any other discussion?
Who's Mike?
Basically, I, I don't think that we need to decide here how the money will be spent. I think that we're taking a look at the fact that there's, what, forty-three, six forty-nine in and how it would be spent would depend on the number of people going and those kinds of things to.
Okay. It's, it's been moved and second. Any, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Okay, that was seven, that was seven zero. Go ahead.
Item number seven, Mr. Chairman, I'll make amended motion to remove the furniture from the budget.
A second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Okay, seven zero.
Item number eight, Mr. Chairman, I'm making amended motion to remove the vehicle allowance.
A second.
It's been moved and second, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Discussion.
Okay, discussion, sorry.
Ms. Bass, can you explain the difference between the county car and the horse?
Yes, I think it was actually just about a year ago, actually, the allowance versus county automobile. The cost really is not a whole lot different in total dollars, it's just whether or not the individual receives by and maintain bill or vehicle, buy automobile and gas and maintenance. I think, like I said, I think when we compared that before, it wasn't a big difference in total cost. It, it just kind of depended on what the choice was.
Yep, but in a case that if, if, if he has an allowance, and God forbid anything ever happened, that, if there was an accident, it would be the county's hospital.
Right, if, if with the allowance and it's personal automobile, if there's an accident or anything like that, it's, it's the individual's liability.
But he pays for the insurance.
Right.
Yeah.
It, car would be maintained like entirely, like a personal automobile. The county, of course, if it's a county-provided automobile, we would provide gas, maintenance, insurance, and, and all the associated costs.
Is there currently a car that would be given to her?
I mean, we would, we would definitely, I think, have to, to give the employee in concern automobile, I think it's part of the terms of employment. I, I don't know, I'm not myself investigated if there's an available automobile or not.
Mr. Chairman? Can you answer that?
There are automobiles, we would have to shuffle someone, we'd probably lose an automobile, we don't have an extra, and the only extra vehicles we have are, are old Crown Victorias, which are not suitable for use on a daily basis. We use those as pool cars, and, and they're, they're barely suitable for that at times. It would probably mean that Ms. Johnson would lose her car.
But if we bring or entertain new companies to come in, and we've got our economic development guy in a, in an old car with a lot of miles and stuff like that, that, that puts a bad appearance on the county, is what I'm saying. When he has a car that, you know, that, that if I was visiting.
You certainly want to put your best foot forward.
You know, the appearance is, means a lot.
Right.
Okay, are there any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose is nay?
Nay.
So let it be known four three? Next item?
Item nine A, I'll make amended motion to cut the recycling by one day per week.
A second.
It's been moved and second, any, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, this is just for one day or this is for an additional day?
Um, that's what this is, an additional day.
Okay.
So we already closed on Wednesday and, and part day Sunday. Okay, so this was given, give them an additional day.
Thank you.
Okay, um, it's been moved in second, uh, any, um, any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Stand approved. Okay, set, set recreation back to the twenty twenty-one adopted?
I'm making a minute motion to set recreation back to the twenty twenty-one year adopted.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, an, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Seven zero.
Nine C, uh, making a minute motion to set fire back to the full year twenty twenty-one adopted.
Second?
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Approved, seven zero.
Item nine D, I got an amended motion to remove the transit administrative assistance out of the budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?
Item nine E, Mr. Chairman, I'm making an amended motion to remove the tax assistance.
Can we get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Seven zero.
Item nine L, Chairman, I'm making an amended motion to remove the building maintenance tip, temps out of the budget.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Seven zero. Animal control tent.
Nine G, Mr. Chairman, I'm making an amended motion to, uh, remove the animal control temps out of the budget.
A second.
It's been, has it been amended in, in second? Um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?
No discussion.
Any, um, any discussion? So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Does stand approved, nine H?
Mr. Chairman, I make an amended motion to reduce the lim sight hours.
A second.
It's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Seven zero.
Item nine I, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to decline uh, having the recycle hours seasonal, having them reduced.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Um, any discussion? Um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?
Nay.
So that's, that'd be, that's four three. Um.
Mr. Chairman Bill?
Yes, sir.
I wanna make a motion to remove funding for the Hilton Head trip, if I can get a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and, and second that, that we remove the, um, Hilton Head trip. Um, all in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
Poses nay?
Nay.
Nay. That's four three. Decline. Go to Hilton Head.
We got discussion now on the whole thing?
Um, now we, what we gotta do is, is, um, um, we need to, um, to, to make a motion to, um, um, to approve the second reading as amended.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the second reading as amended.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve the, um, second reading as amended. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I wanna put on the record why I am voting no on this budget reading tonight. And we'll vote no on the final reading as well unless some changes are made to the budget in the way council is currently doing. I am voting no on this budget because this budget is misguided in terms of where it places our priorities, which should be on our citizens and our employees. This budget asks our employees to bear cuts in their departments, therefore reducing services to our citizens. I think a reduction in council's reimbursements and benefits for certain council members are in order if we are asking others to sacrifice. And furthermore, under what I believe to be buying positive coverage in one newspaper, council wants to spend twenty thousand dollars on a newsletter to citizens, which I'm sure the four behind me will completely craft and control the contents of. I cannot vote for this budget as presented. I'll be completely transparent about this. As long as this budget prioritizes the wrong things and the four council members behind me are unwilling to work with the other three of us on anything except what they want or when they need one of our votes for a super majority requirement, I can promise you this, you will not receive that vote from me. I'm happy to work with anyone on doing the right thing for our citizens and our county, but it has to be a two-way street and there has to be some give and take.
Um, thank you, Mr. Paul, Ms. Green?
Yes, when we take a look at this budget and we say that we have not considered the citizens of Fairfield County, let's take a look at the fact that we have kept our agencies fully funded. We have a lot of things that happen in this county that basically depend on someone else helping others, whether it's food, whether it's medical care, whether it is taking someone in when they are on drugs or other kinds of things and providing services. So I just wanna make sure that when someone says that we're not providing services for our citizens, that we really take a look at what we have para, para, priori, prior, uh, prioritized here in this budget. Whether you want to say something that's divisive or not, if we took a look at a newsletter and others that was ac- actually presented by someone else, I don't remember one council member here who brought that newsletter up. It was something that evidently was, was either in a prior budget or whatever else. And this council sat here and many people voted to say that, okay, we're taking money out of the council budget to the tune of twenty thousand dollars. Now, because we did not specify where that's gonna be, then let's not act as if it's a divisive amount. It's that we acted and took that money out. So essentially, most of the time what happens here is we want to have a balance. If you take a look at three people not even making a motion or not even, um, coming up with anything else, you know, except at the end to make a statement. When the questions were asked, whether or not there was discussion, there was limited discussion. So let's not have grandstanding here. It is so much better to have leadership rather than showmanship.
Ms. Green, are you aware you just voted in favor of taking a luxury trip? Why we trying to cut back to our department?
I
I, I'm.
I have not voted to take a luxury trip.
For funding for it?
Basically, the funding, basically, I said that the funding can be used. People can decide how the funding can be used. You want to specify. You wanna specify. I need to go someplace because my whole deal is I've not had training at all.
Ms. Paul, Ms. Paul, Ms. Paul.
No training, basically, for this council, for the new people. So essentially, Mr. Paul, I understand that you have some things. And I have done that too, Mr. Paul. Thank you.
Next.
Okay, we did vote for it, right? We went through it.
We had voted, we had discussed.
Okay, um, any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay?
Nay.
So is that, um, is that three nays? You, you voted nay too, Ms. Robs?
Vote in favor.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, the budget stands approved as amended as we just, as we just went through?
In second reading, yeah.
Okay, for second reading?
Right.
Yeah, second reading just passed. Let me, let me, um, uh, uh, um. Okay, we, we, we're down now to board and commission, manage all, um, Aaronas Commission, Chamber of Commerce, disability and special needs receivers information. Board and commission appointments, none, old business, none, new business, uh, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, we have Ms. Angie Connor here tonight from the director, she's the director of the council on aging, and she's got a request to make to council, uh, for the use of a county building. Uh, and we bring this to council, um, for her to answer any questions you all may have or any concerns you may have. Uh, and I will let Ms. Connor describe the use and, and what her request is.
Hi, thank y'all for having me tonight. Um, basically what we were doing, as y'all generously, um, y'all know about, y'all generously made a contribution towards our grant project that we have going to renovate our senior center. And that construction is underway right now. And unfortunately, it's been delayed. The project was supposed to be completed and we would be back in business full going by July one, but it's gonna be mid-August before it's done. So we were hoping, we have switched all of our, um, participants that are on our home delivered meals program, our Meals on Wheels. We've switched them over frozen and they're not currently receiving hot meals right now because we don't have a kitchen. So what we would like to do to get back in sooner, because everybody is still getting meals, is we would like to use the behavioral health building temporarily for a couple of months just to house our kitchen back in there so that we can have our Meals on Wheels starting back up. And our people that are residing right here within the ten-mile radius of the agency can start receiving their hot meals again. So that's, that's if y'all would allow us to do, we expect to be back in our building by August. So we would have everything moved out of there by the end of August, middle of September, and we wouldn't need the facilities any longer.
Um, um, Ms. Connor, uh, again, we wanna, we wanna thank you for being very creative and your thinking around making sure that our seniors are being taken care of. Um, I think this is a really good idea, um, council, and, um, so again, wanna thank you for your service to, um, um, to our, um, our seniors and Asian population. Mr. Paul.
Mr. Taylor, with the potential maybe purchase of some property we have that houses the fire administration, there was talks at one of the last meetings that the fire administration might would move into the same building. How would that work if they had to move into and council on Asian and the fire service share the same building?
Uh, that is a good concern because we have, again, looked at moving, uh, fire service over. We've been over to the building with Mr. Jason Pope and looked at that. The building is actually large enough that I don't think there would be a problem. Um, you have an area with that particular building. It, it's almost like two separate buildings, the way it's set up. You have one that has offices on one side, and then you have some larger, just open space with the kitchen on the other. Uh, and, and Mr. Pope really wouldn't use that initially. And I would think by that time in, in the deal with the hospital potentially, that they may already actually be out. So we've, we've have looked at that and we don't think that'll be a problem.
Yeah, um, Mr. Paul, I, I, I'm, I'm like you had already asked that question earlier. So, um, again, so, um, um, anyone have any questions of, of Ms., of Ms. Connor? Um, can we get a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we, um, that we allow the, um, the council on Asian to use the, um, the county building for Meals on Wheels and other, um, um, sources that she may need to do. Um, any other discussion?
What's, what's the length of time, Ms. Connor? Just curious.
We are anticipating, we would like to move in as soon as possible, so hopefully by the middle of May at the latest. And we're hoping to be out of there no later than mid-September.
Okay.
Is, um, we're shooting for actually August thirty-first, but we wanna give ourselves just a little bit of leeway just in case something goes wrong.
Okay.
Yep.
Again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by aye?
Aye.
Poses nay? Seven zero.
Thank you very much.
It's coming. Um, the, the, um, county administration report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first up, we did have, um, a presentation to Element TV, but unfortunately, their representatives did have to leave. They weren't able to stay, uh, and so they have requested that we put this back on the next agenda if we could do that.
Um, yes, sir.
So, uh, they won't be here tonight or have, have left. Next, we have, um, the food, food share schedule. As you all know, we have done a number of food shares where we distributed food. Uh, we do have another one coming up on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth. Uh, Ms. Johnson has been heading that up for us. If you could update council on, on the next food share.
Good evening, um. On Wednesday of this week, April twenty-eighth, we have four separate locations that will be giving out food share boxes. McCorley Liston, the airport, Gigger Elementary, and Mitford Fire Station. This is only for Fairfield County citizens, so you will be required to show your ID. And if you are a new resident, uh, in Fairfield County, please bring your tax receipt with you um, to show your new address. And we'll still be checking your ID to make sure that the name on your ID is the same as the name on your tax receipt. Um, thank you.
Um, Ms. Johnson, um, thank, thank you for, um, for leading this effort and, um, um, one of the question that I had is, is, um, it says one per household, but is that, um, but, but one of the things, um, I've asked can, 'cause some people have to, have, get people to bring them, as long as they stay in separate households, they can be in the same car, correct?
They can be in the same car, but as long as the people in the same car have a different address on their, on their ID, then they can get a box.
Ye- yes, ma'am, thank you. Um, do, do anyone have any questions concerning the food share? This is a really good thing, um, I'll tell you what, um, I'm glad we're doing this again. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Next, we have Mr. Brad Douglas, who is gonna be here to, there he, okay, there he comes. Uh, update council and, uh, answer any questions on our COVID vaccination, um, process here in the county.
Yes, sir, thank you for having me this evening. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, uh, wanna talk about the COVID vaccinations in, in Fairfield County, but just to first, just touch on the COVID cases, I just looked up the numbers today. Um, numbers are, are down significantly from beginning of, from the beginning of this year. I think, uh, Fairfield County over the last seven-day periods averaged, um, four point one four cases per day. Just to put that in comparison, uh, Chester County's five point eight six cases per day and Newbury County's eight point one four. And those are counties similar in size to us. Um, as far as our vaccinations go, um, the, um, Fairfield County's vaccination rate, um, I looked that up today just to give you some current stats. Uh, according to D Hex website, about seven thousand six hundred and forty county residents in Fairfield County have had at least one vaccine dose. That's about a forty percent rate, um, and that's pretty consistent with other, um, counties around. Chester County's at forty-three point nine and Newbury County's at forty point two percent. So just to give you an idea of the vaccine, um, rates that we're getting.
Mr. Doug, let me, let me apologize, can you speak to the microphone? Oh, I didn't hear you up here.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, is this a little better?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm kinda fighting this mask here too, so, um, would you like me to go back over what I just said or?
Um, that, that's okay, just.
Okay, okay, all right, um. And, uh, of course, uh, I think, um, many of you may know that we have been, um, hosting a vaccine site, a drive-through site in Fairfield County. And we've been doing that in a partnership with, um, Fairfield Medical Associates. Obviously, they're a very valuable partner in this because they have the medical license and they have the ability to get the vaccines for us. So we partner with them, um, South Carolina National Guard's been a, um, a big help. They send the manpower to help, um, with, um, uh, basically routing, um, everyone through the site. Um, the sheriff's office helps us out with traffic. EMS is there because we do, in these sites, we do have to provide a fifteen-minute, um, monitoring period afterwards uh, to make sure that no one has any adverse reactions to these vaccines. And we've had some volunteers help out also. Um, we've, our first site was done on March thirty-first, um, this year, uh, it's on a Wednesday, and we administered two hundred and forty-four vaccines. Our second site was conducted on April the fourteenth, and we administered approximately a hundred and sixty vaccines that day. Our third site was, um, admin, was conducted this past Saturday. Our third site was, um, admin, was conducted this past Saturday, and, uh, we only had thirty-three vaccines, um, that we administered that day. Um, of course, we do have second dose, um, this coming Wednesday, we do have a second dose date for folks who came on March thirty-first, um, to come get their second doses. And, um, and our next site that we'll be advertising will be May fifth, um, and that'll be from nine AM to twelve PM. Uh, we are exploring, um, I was on the phone with, um, uh, Pastor Bill with Gethsemane Church today, and we're exploring, maybe doing one out in the Blair area. We're just trying to take it to more rural areas that may, uh, not quite have the access. Um, so we're in discussions with him on that, but he tells me that they are having one, they're partnering with, um, I think it's Prisma Health maybe, um, in a week or so. And, or maybe this, now I think it's a week from Saturday, and they're going to be doing one there. So we're waiting to kind of see what the response is there, because I think they have a limited number of doses that day, and we'll see what the response is there. You know, i- if they use up all those, we'll certainly see about setting one up soon in that area. But if, if they don't have a big turnout, then we'll, we'll have discussions on that. And we talked about doing one maybe up in the Mitford area. Um, of course, we welcome any volunteers, anybody who wants to jump in and help out. Um, you know, we've had some come and, um, just help, um, registering people. It's, um, a big manpower, um, help when they do come. Um, just for, as far as, um, for surrounding areas, well, in Fairfield County, um, Prisma Health has had one vaccine site down at Beaumag. I think they're scheduled to have another one on, I think, May eighth at Beaumag, now in the Ridgeway area. Um, and Hawthorne's recently did one at the old Armory in town. Um, again, our next, the next, um, first dose site we have, again, will be May fifth, and we'll be, um, starting to push out a lot of, um, uh, uh, advertisement for that real soon. I know that we work with the folks with the billboard on bypass and been able to get some good information up there. So, that's, that's about, um, all I have for this report.
Um, I'm Ms. Robbs.
Well, I was there for the first one, I saw it was a good turnout, the second one I rode through. Anything other than promotion than council can do to try to assist?
Well, you know, the, the very first one, um, we, I don't want to say trying to keep it low-key, we're trying to, we're trying to advertise locally. You know, make sure, because our concern was that we would have a big turnout from, you know, when we were cautioned by other folks in other counties doing this, we were concerned about having a big turnout from, you know, Charleston or somewhere like that. Well, um, that didn't seem to be the issue because lots of other ones or lots of other sites have opened up. So, um, you know, certainly, I know we, we pushed these out and, um, uh, put them out to all our department heads, get it put on our social media, work with the school district, and they're really good on their, um, uh, communications to help us get it out. And then, um, I do reach out to, um, Senator Fanning, I know he has a big, big network. I think he has like a, a, maybe a, a breakfast with the ministers, um,
Yeah.
uh, regularly, and of course, he's, he's pushing that out for us. So, um, w- w- we feel good about everything we're doing locally. And then, of course, this last one, I actually reached out to our local Columbia news outlets to see if they could put it out, you know, on television for us.
Okay. Um, a- a- any other questions from council? One of the things, um, Mr. Douglas, um, again, thanks for, for the work you're doing. And I'll tell you what, really like the idea of, of being able to take the, the vaccines into the rural communities, um, like, um, Pastor Bill is talking about. I think we need to look for opportunities like that wherever we can find them, and especially if we can aid that from a county perspective, I sure would like to do that.
Sure, and, and, uh, just to, um, kind of add on to that, um, even though our first sites were there in, you know, right at the old hospital site, we have put in, um, our flyers, our digital flyers, and the flyers we put out, and we work with county transit, and they were providing free transportation, um, and I think.
Yes, sir.
She said they probably had somewhere between ten and fifteen folks who did reach out for that transportation. So we, we are trying, we are thinking about those folks in the far corners that don't have access and may not have access to transportation. We have considered them and we, we feel good about the opportunities we've made for them. But now we just want to see about reaching out a little bit, maybe if, if the need is there, the demand is there, we'd certainly like to see about, um, going out and doing it, you know, kind of, and then corners of the county that they're harder to get here. And, um, Fairfield Medical Associates has been really good about, um, you know, providing their manpower for it and, um, and obviously getting the vaccines that we need for it.
Um, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Are, any other comments? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
No, sir, that's all I had.
Okay, um, clerk to council reporting on, um, county council time. Anyone? If no one, can we get them up, oh, sorry, Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, I think we may want to, uh, statement that Mr. Armstrong talked about, about maybe getting the audit done. I've had, uh, many people call me concerned about the finances of the county.
Yeah.
And I think that is worth looking into.
Um, um, thank you, Mr., Mr. Trap, anyone else? Um, if nothing else, can, um, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay? Seven zero, stand adjourned.